East Greenbush Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. We'll do a roll call, starting on my right with Ms. Steinbeck.
Hi.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah. All right. Well, welcome everyone. I'm sorry about that. But no, so everyone's here except for Michelle, it looks like. So let's stand and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to the approval of the draft minutes. My notes are showing that Mr. Mann and Mrs. O'Brien wasn't here. Do I have a motion to approve the draft minutes? Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Is there a motion to approve the draft minutes? Ms. Turner is their second, Mr. Buno, all in favor? Motion passes. And any abstentions? And Ms. O'Brien and Mr. Mann and? Motion passes, thank you. All right, so moving on to the board forum. I'm gonna start on my left, Ms. Van Orden. Nothing?
Good, Jesse, thank you.
Mr. Sett? All right.
I'm good.
I'm good as well. Um, I'm good, I'd just like to say, I think this is the last meeting before the official start of the school year. And we got our room assignments today for kindergarten, so we are very excited. It's a really exciting time of year, fresh starts, new beginnings, looking forward to it.
Excellent. No, I just want to say congratulations to all the new teachers that's starting. You know, I know there's a lot of meetings, it's a busy time of year. I think sometimes, you know, it's easy to miss all the work that's getting put on, put in with the administration and the teachers are preparing for the coming school year and the administrators. So I just look forward to starting this year off right and doing the best that we could to continue furthering our mission. But moving on to back to school update, Mr. Simonis.
Thank you, Mr. Temple. I just want to provide everybody with an overview of all the planning that's going done, going on right now. We're very excited to welcome the students and the faculty and staff back. Very short period of time. The faculty opening days are September 3rd and September 4th. Students will start school on the 5th. We're doing a lot of preparations to welcome our faculty and staff back with a positive message, but also to make sure that we are well prepared in our classrooms for the kids. Any board members are invited to come to our opening remarks on the 3rd, if you're able to come, that would be great. I'm going to be welcoming our new staff back, our experienced staff back, as well as congratulating our new staff. And I will be talking about our initiative regarding the portrait of a graduate and what that portrait of a graduate is all about in terms of our vision for students. Had some conversations with the teachers' union yesterday about a number of issues to try to get off to a good start. And everyone is welcome for that opening. There also is some required training that is done annually. We are doing our majority of the required training through the Quest R3 online training, which becomes available at the end of August. Need to be completed by September 6th. Those are the required mandated state trainings in areas such as school safety, reporting of various types of mandated reporter incidents, refreshers on our technology and our edlaw 2D requirements to protect data confidentiality of students and a number of other state mandated trainings. There is a lot of time being provided for faculty meetings in each prospective school. We are also having some opportunities for professional development that teachers can select, but it should be a very good two days. Typically, in the school calendar, for the last several years prior to this year, we had more than just two days at the beginning of the year. And sometimes we've had four at the beginning of the year, the years we've had three. So there isn't as much time in the beginning of the year because of the way the calendar felt this year with Labor Day and some of the new holidays that we're observing, but we think it will be very productive for our teachers and our support staff. We're very excited, I'm glad Dr. McQueen is here, our administrator for transportation services, because we are starting a new tool that will be available for our parents called Stop Finder, where our parents will be able to see when their child's bus will be arriving and actually track the location of the bus. Stop Finder information is being sent out to all of our families through the primary email address sometime between August 26th and the 30th. Stop Finder is, gives you the ability on your phone to see where the bus is, to know when the bus is either arriving at your home or at the drop-off point that you designate. I'm gonna ask Dr. McQueen at this point to kind of elaborate a little bit on what's going on with Stop Finder.
Good evening, everyone. We're super excited and we are ready for Stop Finder. It took us over a year to get all of our buses plugged in properly through UPS, so we worked through zone our system to get those all in place.
Took a lot of, it took a community, oh, I'm sorry. It took a community for sure, and we've had a lot of support in doing that, certainly from central administration, and it all started way back when Linda Wager was here, so it was purchased before I even came onboard. So it's been a long process, we're super excited. Like Mr. Simon said, this is for the parents and our families. They're going to be able to see their child's routing information right in the palm of their hand on their phone through the Stop Finder app. That will give them the stop location. It will give them a route number. It will give them the pickup and drop-off times. And it will give them the opportunity to set up customized geo zones that will alert them, say, when the bus is five minutes from their house, 10 minutes from their house, or when it arrives at school. And one thing I think is really important, Stop Finder tracks the bus. But the bus card, also known as student finder, they're kind of too similar. We're kind of, we're planning to kind of drop the student finder name a little bit and just call it bus cards. When the student gets on the bus and swipes their bus card, we're now tracking the student. That will feed into the Stop Finder app, so parents will be able to see on their phone and even get notifications that little Johnny got on at 7:30 from home and then they got off, say, a bell top when they were supposed to get there. So it's a huge safety feature and we're really excited to finally be able to pair those two together.
In addition, the transportation department has been working very hard over the summer to complete the routes. The routes were completed as of today, is my understanding. And I want to thank Dr. McQueen, as well as Carrie Anne Rudolph, Jeff Smith, and Mark Halsey, who do a lot of work over the summer to get our bus routes in shape. Drivers will be coming in for their bid on specific bus runs. There's a bidding process as required by the contract. They'll be coming in a week from today on Wednesday, August 28th. We still have registrations coming in for school. We also have change requests that come in for drop-off points, for example, students that need to be bused to somewhere else, a daycare or a grandparent or someone who takes care of them after school. So those adjustments will continue until the start, actually into the start of the school year. We also have done a lot of work to make sure that our school buses are in good shape, passing Department of Transportation inspections, and there's been a lot of success over the years with our New York State Department of Transportation inspection ratings. I shared with the board, the K-5 class sizes and the board update, our class sizes are very good. We did make an adjustment to ensure that there was equity among the schools and the kindergarten. So because we were able to save some money with the extension of the retirement incentive, we're maintaining the 95 classes at the K-5 level this year that we had last year. We also took a look at our reading needs, and we had originally proposed that we were going to reduce two reading positions. We are reducing one, we filled one, so that there would be a split position between the middle school and the high school. At the high school in particular, as kids are needing help to pass regents classes, we heard from the teachers that they really needed that support. Other things that are going on, we have had a a opportunity to meet as an administrative team today. All of our administrators met today. One of the things that we did was we asked administrators to meet elementary, middle school, and high school to talk about their aspirations for the year and some of the themes that emerged fit right with some of the things that we've been talking about. At the high school level, you know, making sure that we continue to have organized programs where kids can learn about career opportunities that don't involve two-year or four-year colleges. Some of the work that we're doing with the trade unions and other agencies in the community, we want to formalize some of that a little bit more and have that be more of a menu of structured experience for all of our kids. At the middle school level, the emphasis that was spoke about was the importance of engaging with students, being student-centered, and having faculty and staff make sure that we're not only engaging with the students on a regular basis, but as issues come up, we intervene early, we reach out to the families, and we talk to the parents, and we try to be as supportive as we can to address our middle-level youngsters' needs. The elementary schools, they are collaborating on ways that they can work together to support the portrait of a graduate. All of the schools will be supporting the portrait of a graduate, for example, the character education programs that go on in the school. They will be talking about how to shift those a little bit to emphasize those skills that are part of the portrait of a graduate. So it was a very productive meeting today. We also reviewed the requirements of the new safety plans with all the administrators, in case there were any questions. The safety plan is on the agenda tonight for approval. So we're still working on hiring. I think we'll be appointing a number of individuals this evening, but we're really looking forward to the start and we're in good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Is there any questions or comments about the presentation? Thank you.
Welcome.
I skipped over the public forum, so I'm gonna backpedal a little bit here and read this, this statement about the public forum. Residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and/or operations of the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to citizen concerns during the public forum. If a response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the visitors' forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly and efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may be considered defamatory or stigmatizing are prohibited and will be declared out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Are there any comments for, for the board? All right. So moving on to the, to the school tax presentation, Ms. Mulligan.
Good evening, everybody. It is that wonderful time of the year where we go through a process of calculating the tax rates. On the agenda this evening, I need the mic right, thank you, Peter. On the agenda this evening, there are four resolutions associated with the school property taxes. The first one is regarding adopting the dual tax rate system. The second one is related to the tax warrant. The third is related to authorization to correct the tax rolls at a certain level. And also, the fourth one is authorization to approve, authorization to approve certain tax sursuary proceedings, settlements that come to the district. So I thought, we thought it was important to provide a little overview and a presentation regarding the tax rates because it is a very complicated process. There's many calculation factors, and one of the most important pieces to remember is that the school district, that the Board of Education is responsible for setting the tax levy as part of the school budget process. But there's several calculation factors that go into the tax rates. We have six towns that we're apportioning taxes across. There's taxable assessed values, equalization rates, the full value, wholly exempted value. So there's a variety of things that come into play on how we have to apportion taxes basically over 12 different taxing jurisdictions because we have homestead and non-homestead. So homestead is your residential properties primarily, and your non-homestead is your commercial properties. And then there's also your star exemptions. So it is a very complicated process. We work a lot with Rensselaer County and Columbia County, which our towns are located in, to do that process. So in terms of, there's various responsibilities between New York State, our towns, and the school district. For New York State, the big piece is equalization, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about what equalization is. The towns are responsible for the assessments. So the district does not get involved in assessing the properties, that's a town responsibility. And then the school district is responsible for setting the school tax levy and actually going through the recalculation process. In New York State, the dual tax rate system, so the homestead and non-homestead, there's actually only 43 school districts across New York State that go through this dual tax rate system. And one of the benefits is it shifts the, the tax levy that the homestead, it shifts it away from the homestead taxpayers, so it does provide a little bit of a tax reduction, you know, to our homestead taxpayers. So when we talk about equalizations, basically, our properties are assessed by the town, the town assessors, and it's usually a percentage of the market value. So if a town had go through, had recently went through a reassessment process and they valued all their homes at the market value, the equalization rate would be at 100%. Over time, you know, towns do not go through a full reassessment process on an annual basis, but the state does get involved in evaluating and measuring what the market value is of the properties, and that's where equalization comes in. So a particular town could have an equalization rate of 50%, which means the assessed value that's on the books is only 50% of the market value. And basically, it's intended to bring towns that have different assessing variables that come into play to a common standard, which is market value. And one of the things that has happened in the recent years, you know, since COVID, you know, the market value of homes has increased substantially. So it creates differences in the equalizations among the different towns. So basically, it's a method to help ensure that property owners in the different towns contribute their fair share of taxes when we're distributing the tax levy across multiple taxing jurisdictions. This is an example of what the full and assessed values have done within East Greenbush School District as a whole. So this isn't looking at the individual towns within the district. So back in 2020, 2021, the purple line represents what the assessed value is, and the blue line represents what the full market value is. So you can see in 2020, 21, the assessed value and the market value were closer. And then that has grown further apart over the last several years. So that also can cause equalization rates to change more substantially from going, when you have that difference between assessed value and market value.
And is that both homestead and non-homestead?
No, this is, this is all of it together, together. Homestead and non-homestead. So this is what the equalization rates are compared year to year, and this is very important to see how it has changed from town to town. So for example, East Greenbush, the town of East Greenbush, parcels located there, their assessed value is only 75% of the full market value. Whereas the town of North Greenbush, the assessed value is only 16.96% of the full market value. So when we look at it from a year-to-year change, this is where it can have a direct impact on how the tax rates are calculated. So for example, like East Greenbush had a reduction, a five, five percentage point reduction, however, that was a 6% change from year to year. And then we look at the town of Skodak, and their decrease in their equalization was greater percentage-wise than the town of East Greenbush. So their percentage change was 13%. And then the town of North Greenbush also had a significant decrease in relation to the other towns. So basically, just looking at this, our tax rates are also moving in similar directions. So another part of the school tax rate calculations is it's allocated, our tax levy is allocated based on the property value, the full value. So when we go through the process, we take the assessed value, we apply the equalization rates, and then the tax levy is apportioned between homestead and non-homestead amongst the six towns. From there, the tax rate is actually calculated off of the apportioned levy into the town's taxable assessed value. So the assessed value comes back into play. This is an example of what the full values with the equalization rates applied. So when we looked back, I'm just gonna go back a couple of slides, we see how the, the equalization rates have changed. Okay, East Greenbush went down by 66%, Skodak had a 13% decrease. When we go to look on how that actually applies, when we calculate the full values and apply those equalization rates, in the homestead class, East Greenbush's total full value is not increasing at the same rate that the town of Skodak's full value is. Okay, so that's gonna change the apportionment of the tax levy between the towns. And the same with North Greenbush. So really, we have East Greenbush, Nassau, Sand Lake, and Chatham that are in a similar realm. And then this year, Skodak and North Greenbush are the outliers, and that is directly due to the equalizations having a larger decrease than the other towns. This is how the tax levy is apportioned just for the homestead class. The same, the same process applies to the non-homestead, but we are just presenting here the not, the homestead, the residential class. So the homestead class is responsible for 38.5 million of our total tax levy. You can see that, you know, our tax levy increased by 0.55% this year. However, because of the full values changing in different proportions to each other, the town of East Greenbush, the amount of tax levy that is assigned to them is lower, has decreased in relation to how Skodak's values increase, so they have a higher levy apportionment to them. Because basically, the tax levy is apportioned based on those full values. So when full values change and in different relationship to each other, the levy is apportioned in that manner. So this is the result of working through the assessed values, applying the equalization rates, apportioning that tax levy between homestead and non-homestead and amongst the six towns. So the tax rates here are reflected for 24, 25. So the town of East Greenbush, although our levy had only increased 0.55%, the town of East Greenbush will see a decrease in their tax rate of just over 2%. Whereas Skodak would have an increase of 5.25% in their tax rate, and North Greenbush would have a 3.91%. So you can see the relationship between East Greenbush, Nassau, Sand Lake, and Chatham are decreasing at similar levels, and it's all directly related to those full values.
And this is the assessment per thousand?
Yes, per thousand. So this is some additional information just about the dual tax rate system, homestead versus non-homestead. So districts that do not have this dual tax rate system, they would be just applying a single tax rate. So basically, adding it all together and apportioning it between the six towns as a whole. And so this, the single rate system in 24, 25, if, if that was to be used, the homestead rate would have been $17.27 versus what the actual rate under the dual tax system would be 15.87. So you can see how, what the percent savings are between the different towns. Chatham is an outlier. It's, it's unique there. There's only 11 parcels. The total tax levy apportioned is only just over $20,000. So there are things that vary there. So over time, what I saw in some of the data, at one point in time, there was the savings there, but other points in times, there wasn't. So it shifted over the last several years. But again, that is, there's only 11 parcels in the town of Chatham.
Is there a reason why we keep them in our district? 11 parcels? Can we say anything, like do something to get rid of them? There's a process you have to go, you would have to go through the state to redraw district boundaries, it's a pretty, I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, I'm not.
It's pretty, it's a pretty cumbersome, difficult process to move parcels of property. Just to be in other districts.
So. So I wanted to provide a little bit more background on some of the tax rate and the calculations. There's more detail and analysis in the memorandum under the, the board agenda item that provides a little bit more. You can see the analysis related to the non-homestead rates there as well. So I didn't know if anybody had any questions or comments on that.
I have a comment. I've enjoyed the presentation a ton, you know, I really do appreciate the work. I think, you know, considering tax rates, like, you know, it was, it was really great, you know, it was really great listening and helping definitely understand the tax rates. I was wondering about like the key concept five, where we spoke about the specific impact to specific jurisdictions. And I'm just wondering, and I know we discussed this before, but just for the sake of the public meeting, and I know there's a lot of work to put together. But recognizing that we're kind of at a, you know, that, you know, we're gonna have limitations financially looking into the future. I really want to be conscientious of the individual impact across the separate jurisdictions. So, so seeing how East Greenbush had a 2% decrease and Skodak had a 5% increase, I think as, as we think about, you know, you know, raising the tax levy if there's a need because of financial strain, I'm just wondering, just, you know, how much of an impact our specific jurisdiction is gonna be looking towards as we consider, you know, if that's the direction. Just, just so we could say, you know, not, not so we could say, but so we could, right? You know, just, just do our best to make sure that, you know, we're thinking about the individuals that's paying these taxes.
So, yeah, thank you, Mr. Temple. So a little bit of background regarding like the timing of knowing about some of this information. So we go through the school budget process in the spring. At that point in time, we do not know what the assessed values, the final rolls do not come out to until July 1st. Equalization rates are set just before that, tail end of May, June are released by the state, so there's some information that we wouldn't have knowledge. Sometimes in school, some school budget presentations, perhaps here in the past, you know, oh, what is the impact on the, on the individual taxpayer? What's the impact on the tax rate? Anytime that those calculations are run during the budget process, it's gonna assume the data we're talking about now in terms of assessed values. So that would never be a good predictor of what the impact is gonna be on tax rates because that would not be known until those final assessment rolls come out, and also the state sets those state equalization rates. But the one thing I did take a look at, because we had discussed it previously, is just to represent, a few years ago, the town of North Greenbush, actually. In one of the years where the tax levy was a 0% change, they actually had a decrease of about 11% in their tax rate. And also, the town of Chatham had a 26% decrease in their tax rate. And these were all driven by those equalization factors because what happened in the town of North Greenbush, their equalization rate remained fairly stable, where the other towns had fluctuations. So those variables are always going to come into play. In that same year where the town of North Greenbush had that decrease, Skodak had increased by 3.5%. But the year just after that, they had a decrease of 4%, and this is all while our levy had stayed in that 0 to half a percent. So there is going to be several variations. So it's definitely something to be mindful of. But part of the school district budget process is to, you know, set, set the school budget and then the tax levy.
Thank you. It just sounds like there's an average effective tax rate over a period of time that, that might.
There's like shit, it's like a shift of balance, balancing of the, you know, tax levy. So this year, maybe, you know, one town paid less, you know, of the levy apportionment, and then the following year, it could have been more. And that's all a function of the equalization rate. But that's representing that perhaps this year, the town of North Greenbush's equalization rate went down further, because perhaps the homes in that particular area of our district, market value increased at a higher rate than some of the other towns. And also considering how their local towns' assessment practices are too, also comes into play. So.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, moving on to our moving on to our board goals. Mr. Simon?
Yes, we, we wanted to just start, start some discussion regarding the board goals. The, the district has had a goal setting process for the board for several years that you're up and I've been here. And last year, as you recall, the board aligned the vision and the goals with the three priority areas of the ASA Learning Twenty Twenty Five Initiative, which was future-driven education, whole learner focus, and safe, inclusive, and diverse schools. From there, administration worked to identify some annual goals that we could implement during the course of the year in each of those three priority areas. We report those back to the board through the scorecard document that we have had in place for some years. And there have been some discussions about that range from keeping them, keeping the areas the same. Some board members felt that the areas were on target with our district's needs. But there's also been discussions about perhaps reducing the number of annual goals, consolidating some of them. Maybe some are still important priorities, but really don't need to be a goal, because they're part of what we have to do every day to serve the kids in the community. And there's also been some discussions among the board of doing a little bit more precise job of identifying how we're going to measure our success in those goals in terms of the data that we want to utilize. So just going to open up for an invitation of how the board feels about the three areas and some comments. And we've had a chance to look at these about how we might change them, consolidate them, where we want to go for this coming school year.
I could kick us off here. I like the idea of, you know, when I, I think all, all the goals are very important. You know, I think we've been doing a lot of great work towards them. You know, future-driven education. We got the career readiness curriculum where we're updating our, our staff with, with valuable trainings to help them reach the kids. And we have the, the multi-tiered systems of support, which, you know, spans a couple of different, you know, goals that, that we have in front of us. And I know we're always focused on, on, on safety and we're actively, we're always looking for opportunities to, to embed on that. So, so for, for myself, like when I look at the goals, I always think about, you know, how are we, how do we know we've arrived at our destination? So when we say future-driven education, like what I wonder is, you know, what is the marker that says, you know, we are actively, you know, preparing our kids for the future as, as a data element? So, so as you mentioned, like you were speaking about, you know, reporting and data, and I just would like to see more like in regards to, you know, the measures that we use to, you know, or when we say safe, you know, like how do we, like I, I know we have, you know, a safety plan, we work with lo- local law enforcement, you know, we have multi-tiered system. But, but it's like, how are we saying, do, do kids feel safer? Do parents feel that, that the children are safer? How do staff feel about the safety of the environment and, and as measurables that we can say, you know, we are doing better? Or, or that what we put in place have worked? So, so, so kind of for me, like among those lines, this is the measurables.
I think I would really like to echo that, is that I think it's imperative that all of our goals be measurable and are benchmarked. And we have like a target. And I don't think some of our goals, I think, are a little more abstract in that nature. Or when we reviewed it, some of the, you know, data is, is like one-off or like, you know, meetings are here and there. And I think I would prefer more, you know, as Jesse said, data-driven goals and something that we can really measure to whether we're succeeding or not. And I think that that's really important when we're talking about, you know, how do we measure inclusive, diverse, and safe schools? And what does that even mean? So I think, you know, fleshing that out and always being mindful, if it's not something that we can measure, then when, then you can never achieve it in my eyes. You know, data, you, I don't know how you could sit in front of people and say that we achieved it if you can't back it up somehow. So I, I would like to move in that direction. I do think that there's a lot here. So I would love to be able to, you know, put some focus on, you know, a few things that we feel like we could achieve and really lean into. I think sometimes you get, for a lack of a better phrase, better bang for your buck. And I want to make sure, you know, that another, I guess, the juice is worth the squeeze, right? So making sure that everyone's efforts are worthwhile. But I think my first and, and main concern is that it's, that we're data-driven and that we have measurable outcomes. Otherwise, I don't think we should adopt it as a goal.
As much as I like data-driven, when I look at something like the whole learner focus, we're talking about graduation rates, Regents diplomas, advanced Regents diplomas, ELA and math test assessments. Those are very measurable and data-driven, but that's not whole learner.
Yes, yes.
We have nothing in here about humanity, about art, about music. And that, to me, is that whole learner piece. So I want to be sure that we don't allow that data, like the fact that there isn't a state assessment for something doesn't mean it's not valuable. And it shouldn't be part of what we're doing. Because when I see whole learner focus, and then all I see is testing, I'm concerned about how we're defining a whole learner. So I, I don't know what the best way is to maybe collect data on those things. Maybe it's utilization, maybe it's participation in statewide festivals or county music festivals, something like that. But I'd like to see more of that being integrated so that we're not so focused on just the testing and raising scores, because raising scores does not necessarily mean that our students are better educated. It means they perform better on an exam.
I think, can I say something there? I don't think that data-driven means state-sponsored testing. I think that, you know, there's plenty of things that you can, you can make a data point, you can benchmark to, that is not state testing or anything to do with, you know, testing in a classroom. I think of if we're gonna, for example, I've talked about this before at other meetings, if we're adopting Portrait of a Graduate, and we're saying that we want to make sure the implementation, where the board is behind it. And if we happen to say something Incorporated Portrait of a Graduate is, is a goal, right, for us? You know, figuring out, well, how do we define success of Portrait of a Graduate? How do we implement it? And what do we mean? And I think that there's ways you can, you know, define success for that. And there's ways you can measure, whether it's a self-evaluation, whether it's a student evaluation, other, other things. I don't think that when we talk about data, at least for me, and I don't think for Jesse, but you can correct me, it means state-sponsored testing.
Yeah, I, I would say, like, I agree with you both in a sense that, like, like I totally get the point of saying, you know, we're moving in a direction of EVAB. And I think that's what Portrait of a Graduate is, is that
Exactly.
You know, there, there's a whole student, you know, that, that we're considering, and what skills do they need, you know, and a couple of different pathways. And I also agree that there's, there's ways to, to evaluate in a, in a, in a data way. Yeah.
So I just want to comment on the discussion that's occurred so far. So one of the things I've given some thought to, because we've had similar discussions in the past, is how do you, how do you measure, as Mr. Temple said, how do you measure, you know, safety? You know, quantitative approach would be, okay, a reduction of incidents, some of the data that you're going to look at tonight regarding the SSEC data that used to be called the VADER data. That's a good data source to track student interactions and behaviors in the school that contribute, that followed to various safety categories. That would be a data set that could be constructive and informative. Prior to COVID, and some members of the board weren't here at the time, we implemented the U.S. Department of Education School Climate Survey, which does look at how students, faculty, and staff, and families feel about the environment of the school from two or three different vantage points. One is the physical safety. There's various questions that relate to physical safety and then emotional safety, acceptance, value that, are you valued by other students? How do you feel about, are you valued by teachers? And gets into relationship aspects of it. So that might be something to consider, as something that we could do, is if the board chose a, chose this, you know, looking at some perception data around school climate and safety. We did it in the past with, started with fifth graders through seniors. We did it with all instructional and non-instructional staff, and we did it with all families. And we had a pretty good response, really. And we worked with consultant agency that works for the state, works with the State Education Department to, to evaluate the data. So that's something I would just say is, is out there as an option. The other thing I think that was an important discussion that you just had was the Portrait of a Graduate is going to be something that really is a vision statement of what we expect all students to graduate with. But there's implications for that Portrait of a Graduate for classroom instruction, different pathway options that we want to provide to students.
Yep.
So the Portrait of a Graduate fits with the SED shifts that are occurring for graduation standards and is more encompassing, as Catherine said, of not just the state ed testing, but encompassing of the broader skills that kids need. And, and goes into areas that are more socio-emotional, such as demonstrating empathy, adaptability, and those kinds of skills that may can't, can't be measured on a, on a state test or a readiness exam, but are really important for people to be successful after graduation. So just some comments, I think, School Climate Survey could be done. I also think that the Portrait of a Graduate is going to be something that will drive a lot of important initiatives within the district and is more whole learner focused in terms of the approach. Not that state testing isn't important, is important. I think graduation rate isn't important, it's very important. But there are these other, there are these other broader sets of data that are also equally important in terms of preparedness for kids.
I want to, I want to say too, and, and after that, I want to open it up, but like to, to end this point, I think we're doing great, like with the qualitative data. Like I think we have tons of qualitative data when I look at the scorecard and a lot of the background. And I think a lot of, lot, lot of what we're discussing is the quantitative of, of safety, you know. So, so I think keeping, keeping what we already are doing and then adding to it some of those pieces. I'm curious from, from other board members, thoughts about goals and whether it's past progress or, or what we would like to see in the future.
So I, I agree with the, the themes. I think if we're going to go that route, there's a lot of kind of broad things, as you kind of, they're interconnected. I'm looking at the, our plan here, our vision and the goals, they definitely need to be whittled down to a degree. And I know, you know, we were very explicit in certain areas that we wanted to make sure got accomplished, or at least close to accomplished, such as the capital project, Portrait of a Graduate, things like that. Some of our data areas in terms of improving scores and learning for our kids, the pre-K programs. But I think we just have to focus in on some of the broader themes. A couple of those items underneath that. And then as an outgrowth of that, what is the, why and, you know, what kind of data do you want to collect and why are you collecting the data? And, and how are you going to be able to support any shift space of the data? Right? So is it curricular data? Is it going to be safety data? Is it going to be climate data? I just, just be sure that, you know, whatever we collect, it's purposeful, meaningful, and that there's going to be some kind of action around it, should we have to, you know, and then report back to the board and see what, what we need to do. So, you know, I support going in that direction. There may be some things that we want to be more explicit about. You know, like I said, like the pre-K program thing we talked about, capital projects, they're ongoing, so I think they can be removed, because they fit to similar kinds of themes. But I think when we pour on the conversation and getting more specificity, then we'll be able to get into, you know, the why and the, the what we collect.
One of the things that you brought up was pre-K. And that's been an ongoing conversation. We're expanding pre-K, and the board is very interested in developing an evaluation of the pre-K program in terms of student growth and student learning. So, you know, it, it may, that whole goal, evaluating the pre-K program, may be something that we keep as we try to develop some, some measures for that process.
I was thinking, Jeff, that what you would do is you would evaluate programmatically across the pre-K twelve. And then you can decide where it's going to fall. So for example, like Cathy mentioned, the scoring, the Regents pieces, we may want to look at different parts of it. But generally, we're looking at those kinds of pieces, like across the continuum and, and make it in, in the goals. And then we can then decide what, what is it that we're looking at more specifically, like a pre-K evaluation tool? I don't think we need to get that piece on the, on the document.
So you're, you're thinking
I'm thinking like across
Across pre-K to twelve, curriculum instruction, assessment, PED, policy. I'm trying to visualize a, like a visual that, that looks at the
Right.
All the legs of the table of a school district.
Right. Because you're collecting a lot of these things already.
And we do have a lot of data tools that we don't always bring forward to the board.
Exactly. And the schools are sub to a lot of that already. So. I just want to kind of say that the focus is going to be curricular changes across, for example, the continuum. And then, you know, what the tool was going to use, and then you can bring those tools back to us and say, we're going to pre-K here, we're going to three through eight here, middle school, and then, you know, chunk it a little bit that way. If that makes any sense.
It does make sense.
I think with like data, and we have a lot, you know, and I know that the school district and the state has a lot to offer. What I think about it more is in, if we're looking about goals, if you're looking to build in Portrait of a Graduate, you know, how do you, how do you measure, you know, some of those empathy? You know, how do you, is it a self-evaluation? Those are the types of things that I say if we're going to focus on, we have to be sure that we all agree on what success of, the success means. And like, is it fifty percent of people of the student body say they are empathetic, like, or their peers say they are, whatever? I think, I, I don't know what it looks like, but I'm, all I think I'm saying is that we have to have that built in. Otherwise, the goals themselves and how you're going to report them out come the end of the year is going to be very difficult. And no one's going to feel, I feel like, going to walk away saying, wow, we nailed that. If we don't actually say upfront, these are the parameters, this is what we want to see. You know, our graduation rate, all that, we can look at that. But if we want to put it on here, if we're looking to, you know, do better, well, increase it by what? By what point? Percentage of a point? By what, you know, and, or if we're looking at, you know, whole learner focus, how many students, you know, didn't graduate? How many more do we want to graduate? Or how many more do we want to go in tech programs? Or yada, yada, yada. And I think that those are the kind of markers and indicators that I think are important. And that's what I kind of mean by like having measurable outcomes. To me, it's like I Um, to me, it's like I don't, I'm not necessarily hung up on what certain outcome or how to measure it. I just think that they have to be, and I think the board's goal would be to talk about that together, to make sure we all agree on whatever. Measurable outcomes or whatever success means for each one of these.
I I wanna I wanna say too, cause I I wonder too, like, and and, cause I think even just establishing. Um, what those goals are, like, 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 for example, like empathy, right, like, are we talking about empathy for others? Are we talking about, like, the world around you, right, like, like, on what level, like, even thinking about targeting and and. So, before we even get to measurables, it's like, wha- what do we expect of the goal itself? You know, and 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 I just wanna say also that, like, cause I wonder sometimes when we talk about data. Um, and and creating, you know, using that as the goals. I just wonder if we have to focus on the data piece first and then figure out, you know, what's the important data. Down the road as ongoing discussion, so I even think about like the process, you know, how are we gonna move forward with getting the data? And then making it meaningful, and which should go first, you know, I ju- I just wanna just make sure we're intentional so that.
I think everything that is being discussed is really on target with where the district is heading, I just wanna. I just wanna emphasize that this Portrait of a Graduate is brand new. To our faculty, to our staff and to our community, and it's really important as the board sets goals and talks about measures. That the faculty and the staff and the parents and the community are involved in the process of. Setting some of those measures, because there are many faculty and staff are just gonna be introduced to this. On opening day, I would also emphasize that it's it's a long-range process, you're talking about shifting the district. Pre-K to twelve to really embedding these Portrait of a Graduate skills. Into instruction, curriculum, after-school programs, apprenticeships, community-based learning experiences. It takes multiple years, so we have to be cautious to develop measures that are realistic for. First year of implementation, second year of implementation, the third year of implementation, and take a long-range view. We want this to be both setting a vision from the board level, but we also, in a sense of that, we also want. To have it be informed by staff, parents, community members, cause that's the, that's the whole process of getting everybody to agree. That this is where, what we want our kids to be able to do when they graduate, so. It's really important to have that back and forth process with the internal community, but also the external community as we measure. Particularly with Portrait of a Graduate, and using some data that we can get and some some of the best ideas for. How we might capture those kinds of things, or how do you measure empathy, for example, as you're talking from the folks that are um. That we have the expertise to work with.
I think it's like you think about benchmarking, so. You need to figure out what you're gonna measure, because this year you need to measure it, right, you're benchmarking, this is year one. So, you wanna know what it looked like when you started, or at least that's what I, you know, what I would wanna do if I was doing this at my day job, right? Like, how does it look today, and then next year, we can see how does, how does the graduating class look, or how does, whatever. And then, you know, five years down the road, you're gonna have some really great. You're gonna have some really great, you know, stories or or look or see how you improve, and you continually need to say, we need to focus more, we need to do more here and there. But you can't begin to know that unless you do have that information upfront, so.
I think the measurements are more at a stages, like you have, you have an awareness, we're in an awareness stage right now. And then we 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 shift more to a uh development stage, and an implementation stage, then an evaluation stage. And and you can have measures at each of those different stages, but it's gonna look a more, a little more uh concrete and. Finite at the at the later stages, cause people are, people are learning about it.
Right, right. When the seniors go to graduate this year, whatever measures you're taking, right? That's like your year zero or your year one, depending upon when you consider it fully implemented. So, then, when you have, the whole, the whole goal is for the students to graduate with. X, Y, Z, all those statements, right, so that you're assuming, right, all the seniors graduating now might not. Meet that, but your goal would be to be able to meet that in year, year five or year four, X percentage of students graduate with this. I don't think you can begin to have those sort of conversations or even know unless you understand where you are now within those. You know, if you know the student body well enough, you would know, I guess, where folks are in each one of those. Statements, but you really, you would need the year, the year zero.
Is there a component in Portrait of a Graduate for exit surveys for both? Students as well as families, community, that would be helpful information as well, and hopefully that would grow over. Four or five years, and we would see trends.
It's interesting that you say that, Jennifer, cause I was just thinking of, when Emily was talking of the, we do the uh senior exit survey through. Uh, a company that provides that survey every year, and then they do eighteen months after graduation survey. That survey may not necessarily capture. The Portrait of a Graduate skills, but it could, we we could develop something al- along those lines, you know.
Or just better align what we're currently doing with what we've put in Portrait of a Graduate, so that the questions align with what we're, our expectations are.
Right, so I think that that is very feasible, and I was gonna bring that up as another data point that maybe we don't use at the board level as. As well as we should.
And does it currently now just go to students, or does it go to families as well, do you know?
It's a senior exit survey, just for the senior students that's implemented, and then eighteen, they have contact information, I think eighteen months afterwards. They contact them to see, you know, what they're doing and resurvey it, resurvey them again, and again, we haven't. We utilized it within the first few years, we had it more internally, but it's something I think we should bring. Bring back to life a little bit in terms of how we use it to make decisions and evaluate. You know, the student's readiness when they graduate from high school.
So, I think to me, it sounds like Portrait of a Graduate is, some folks here are interested in in exploring that for a board goal. In the context of uh the implementation phase and setting, kind of setting ourselves up. To be able to, you know, down the road, evaluate and and and, you know, being able to have, you know, data answers to the right question, so. I think, you know, I'd be interested in exploring more about how to fold in Portrait of a Graduate. In the context of, are we implementing it, are we asking the right questions? And are we supporting, you know, faculty, the teachers, staff in the right ways? I think that that's what I'm hearing.
Is Portrait of a Graduate currently defined enough to do that?
So, I think the short answer to that would be yes, um, in terms of, when I think of the Portrait of a Graduate and the work that has to be done, I think. I agree with what everyone has said, but I think there's a couple different parts, there's, there's the um. Evaluating the competencies, you know, are the students, um, you know. Are they coming through and getting those competencies or skills that we want in terms of competent learner, effective communicator? There's that evaluation process of the actual competencies, and then I think the other aspect is evaluating. How we are implementing the Portrait of a Graduate in terms of, do we have some um measurable goals? For year one, these are the things that we wanna have happen, um, to make sure Portrait of a Graduate is is going well in terms of for students, for families, for faculty. Year two goals, year three goals, um, you know, outside of just measuring where are our students with the competencies? And then how are we gonna know, as we're implementing across the years, are our students, you know, progressing in those competencies? So, I think there's kind of two aspects of that. You know, with this, you know, being a year one, I think there's gonna be, um, you know, we've discussed having our education committee. Um, you know, be the committee um that helps guide uh the direction um. And uh setting some goals and, you know, an action plan for the Portrait of a Graduate, so I know more to come, you know, regarding that as well.
What I'd like to propose is uh, let our, let our team try to capture this conversation in a summary document. For the board to take a look at, and I'd like to take some time to see if I can't frame. A document that would look, that would address some of the things that you have talked about tonight, it's kind of a template. Uh, as as everyone has been saying, identify some data. Uh, sets, and it's framed around pre-K to twelve, as Mike had said, and and see if we can't come up with something that visually represents the discussion that we just had.
I just wanna, are are we saying like a short term, we're saying a short term and a long-term plan, right, so it's like the short term? Is that, cause on.
I think those would be the different benchmarks.
I'm thinking we have like a year one, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
But kind of what Emily was saying, like, here's where we wanna be at the end of year, here's where we started, where we're at the end of year one, and project where we'd like to be in subsequent years.
Yeah, so, to kinda add on to that, Jesse, so I guess I I possibly envision a little bit of, you know. Maybe there's fewer goals, but then the, you know, the goals may be kind of. Long range in terms of, um, yeah, just throwing out there, Emily had mentioned, you know, the graduation rate, you know. Maybe it is our current graduation rate is ninety-five percent, and our goal is to increase graduation rate by two percentage points. Um, you know, for all students, and then maybe we even start looking at subgroups of students, um, so it's a little bit of a, you know, that could be a long-term goal, but then. You know, um, there could be some action steps taken within the current year to help get there, and maybe those action steps are the things that change. A little more more often than the actual goals.
One of the things I think is a really good, and sorry to cut you off, example of that is a goal we have, um, I think it's under Safe, Inclusive and Diverse. Is our um recruit, recruitment development uh of a diverse and inclusive talent pipeline of leaders. Yada, 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 right, so how do we measure, like, how are we measuring that this year, right? Um, we didn't, we don't, we didn't really have concrete data, I feel like I would need a survey of what are, what the. What these leaders are, like, what what are the leaders are, what what is our goal, and what steps have we taken to get there? I think that that's kind of like how my brain wants to work, and that's how I know if I've met something, or if I can say we're successful, right? If I can say, this is how it looks in one year, it looks like this in two years, but we hope that in five years, X, Y, Z will happen. We all understand that these changes are like you're moving a dial a little bit. And you're hoping that it all comes together and that all the pieces fit together, so that you do, five years, ten years down the road. You do have the the leader or whatever pipeline you're trying to make, right? So, that's when I think about it, especially that example is a really good one, I think, you know, it's it's only, it has a lot. Where are we publicizing things, what fairs are we going to, who who are we internally trying to el- you know, elevate? And and what tools, what professional, those types of things, do, are we a welcoming environment? And so they all kind of jumbled together, but that's how my mind wants to flesh out goals, and wants to figure out if they're measurable or not, you know?
Thank you, Emily, and and reason why, like I was asking, and I think that that's that's perfect, like the the example with recruitment. Um, because like, that's something that that we know on a surface, we already have the data available, or could pursue a path for. Like, my only caution was with Portrait of a Graduate, is that I think it's such an important project. I just don't wanna rush the process of evaluate, like, coming up with the measurable rules for, you know, so so it's like when we say empathy. Like, I think that's a whole separate conversation to say, cause if we rush the process, what what I don't wanna end up is in right back where. You know, we're saying, you know, maybe that's not the measure, you know, or, so I just, I just think some of those elements might be, you know, how are we gonna measure? Empathy, you know, that our target is gonna be something that is is inclusive, that's all of our whole learner focus. You know, I don't wanna have an empathy institutionally that's historically the same for some of the Portrait of the Graduate work, that 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 was my only concern.
So, then your go- your goal around Portrait of a Graduate could be by the end of year one, or year zero, whatever year you wanna call this, is to. Clearly define what the goals are and how we're going to measure them as a district. And I think, right, like, we don't, we're not doing that, right, this is, that's, that's like Roy and teams and the leaders and and the schools and the staff, right? They know, they know the students, they know how to measure things, we, you know, and so, yeah, if that work needs to be done, if we all need a year to do that. Then we should definitely take the year to do that, and they, you know, and make sure it's done right, but you still have, regardless of, you still have a goal. Do all of our things, all of our, you know, five, whatever they are, however many, Roy, do they all have a pathway on how to measure what success looks like? What each person should have, and how are we gonna measure that, that could be your goal for the year, you know?
Rewatch the tape later, catch all that.
You can call me anytime, Roy. You'll just have to get me to be quiet.
I'm not sure if it fits here or with the next topic, but I I do wanna bring up, because we discussed safety as a goal. I have been asked by the Teachers Union to consider uh looking at our cell phone practices at the high school level. Because a number of districts have gone in that direction, and are talking about implementation of uh further restrictions on cell phones. And one of the things I promised them, I would bring it up to you, but secondly, I think that in order to do that well. We need to have a year of uh folks at the high school. Staff, administration, maybe a board representation and some families. I think the issues for high school students are different than middle school. I think um there's a level of independence that we supported by not having an all-out ban at the high school. I think there are high school kids that are generally busier and changes in schedules and those kinds of things. For after-school activities generally are are uh require communication. So, I think um, there's a whole set of issues that would need to be sorted out. And I'm not comfortable changing the cell phone practices at the high school now, but I am comfortable supporting an effort to evaluate. What we could do, and I I think the, the driving, the driving. Factors that should be considered in any cell phone policy. A, we learned from the middle school that it really did make a difference on academic and focus on mental health and less distraction. Uh, those should be the reasons that we do it. Or do something, so if the board can support that, I'd like a committee to meet, study the issues involved in cell phones at the high school. And bring back information to the board, but I'm not ready to recommend a change right now.
I support that, I've um been approached by both people in the community as well as different faculty members who have um. Concerns of different types about it, they're asking, you know, if there's going to be a change to the policy, but as a board member, I'd really like to hear more. About, I guess, how they're being used or misused at the high school level, how they're contributing to. Incidents of um altercations, um, so any of that information would be welcome.
I I would just add to, like, not not just the uh the pinch points, but also the positives, right, like, what what benefits is added, you know? Cause it's like, you know, think about whole learner and safe and inclusive, I think having, you know, relating it back to the goals and saying, how is it? Just this is just how my mind works, how is it disturbing our goals and, you know, and just, you know, but as a conversation piece, saying that, you know. But that's just.
I'll echo Jen in that, you know, folks have reached out to me, um, wondering if the policy was going to change this year um for the high school as well. In support of it, so I think it'd be great if it, you know, um, if we look into it and we really understand, and also there's other. Districts right around us who are doing it, so it's would be easy probably to tap them as well, so I think that that's great news, thank you.
And I think others that did it last year as well, if we wanted to talk to them about. Positives, negatives, about the change.
We've been having some ongoing conversations about among superintendents through the Questar Component District system, where everyone's at and their thinking. And then they're planning around cell phone, uh, using the schools, and the governor has highlighted this, and gone around the state and talking about it, so. I think it's important to get the feedback, I think it's important to analyze it, and I think it's important to have a balanced approach. When um, all is said and done, but I do, I do support the idea that. Student mental health and reduction in disciplinary incidents that may be triggered by the cell phones are important priorities.
I would I would also like to hear from teachers what their specific concerns are, um, because maybe there's a way to deal with those concerns. Even if there's not an all-out ban, or, you know, like, I think there's gotta be a way to help with whatever the issues are.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Foundation AIDS Study. Do we, alright, school safety, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
So, annually, the district. So annually, the district uh, is required to report to the state education department. The school safety and educational climate incident count. Uh, used to be referred to as V A T E R. Over the last few years, there's been a state committee, school safety committee at the state level, which I serve on. That has looked at the various definitions of the uh, data that is collected and made some changes to those back in twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. So some of the incident categories are tied into the penal law to better define them. So for example, assault, assault is defined as what an assault means in the law. But it just happens to occur uh, at the school level. So we gave you two or two years worth of data as we have in the past. Marissa compiles the report for the board, but the high school principal does the high school report and each respective school does their report. The uh, S S E C data does not capture all discipline data. Within the district, only that discipline data that falls within these particular categories. We have seen a decline. In the number of incidents required to report from last year to this year. As I said in my update uh, to the board, one incident of discrimination, harassment and bullying is one too many. And uh, we have identified that issue as a priority. We're gonna be talking about that at a policy board, uh, board policy committee meeting on the ninth. Our attorney is working with us on some changes to the policy. Our code of conduct was updated last year to include. The definitions of uh, discrimination, harassment and bullying, among other definitions. So we've had a positive trend over the last couple of years. We're only required to report the data that falls within this category, these categories. We had um. Two offenses that involved a weapon, which I reported to the board. Um, one was a toy gun that could not house ammunition. It was just a noisemaker, made to look like a real gun. And we had a jackknife, which was really more of a camping knife. Neither incident involved a threat made with the weapon towards the students. It was a situation where. Issues were risen in the bathroom where, you know, sometimes we have vaping incidents and. We are, we are permitted uh, when we have a reasonable suspicion. To search students and in the process of searching their backpacks for suspected vaping or uh, large groups of people in the bathroom, the knife was found. The gun uh, involved the students had a number of issues and uh, we've been intervening as involved in county services. And uh, has had a number of challenges, family challenges that we've, we've got a lot of intervention in place for that student. So we're on, uh, it's been a positive trend. Again, as I said, uh, the. At the state level, the focus on the material incidents of discrimination, harassment and bullying has been a priority. It's part of our code of conduct, so even if it doesn't rise to the level of the definition in the S S E C requirements, we address it through the code of conduct. It could be addressed through a traditional disciplinary consequence such as a suspension, depending on the degree of it. It could be addressed through an intervention of some kind, which could include a um. Counseling, uh, mediation or a restorative practice. In terms of uh, restorative practices are strategies to help students own their behavior, make amends, so to speak, and to repair the relationships. Uh, between themselves, other students and uh, school faculty. So if there are any questions about the data. We are trying to work on a better tool. I mentioned this last year to be able to capture discipline trends that don't fall within these categories and. Mr. Styles and I and Peter Goodman are talking about shifting to a new platform. We don't get good reporting out of the current system that we have right now, so there's not, without a lot of manual work. We can't, for example. Capture, you know, incidents of skipping class or truancy or the things that don't fall within these categories.
Yeah, so the the system that we use now um, has been used for, you know, several years and. You know, it's it's good for what it was originally intended for, um, but, you know, looking at. More efficient ways to collect data and and get, um, you know, some discipline data and some other things beyond these, you know, variable incidents. There are some other platforms that we can use, even within the power school um, system that we already have. It's just really taking a look at that and, you know, that would be a a shift, you know, for. Teachers and administrators, so really trying to make sure that we're, um, you know, when we make that change, that's still meeting their needs as well.
The only other thing I would add on the categories of incident, I'm always concerned when we see the numbers and uh. Use of drugs, alcohol, possession of drug and alcohol and other illegal substances in the school environment. Just reminding everybody, we do have a um. We we have through our general fund budget added social workers. Over the course of the last several years. We've gone from five to nine. Uh, in the district to support students who have emotional behavioral needs. We have a program through Rensselaer County that's been in place for a while. We can do drug and alcohol prevention and education. Programming for students and there's a referral process for students that need drug and alcohol treatment. We've had an expectation that anytime a student is found in school in possession of alcohol. Or uh, vaping uh, material, marijuana, other types of drug paraphernalia. That there is a referral done to that county program. And an assessment done uh, as to whether or not that student has an addiction and that student may need those services. Those services are voluntarily voluntary, however, the parent has to consent to it.
Have we seen seen an uptick in the use of cannabis in school?
Cannabis and some vaping involves other substances. Countywide and statewide.
I'll, I always wonder just about the uh, the the unreported like climate aspects like, you know, so sometimes you could have less assaults and. And it's just my my, you know, I I just kind of, I always think of like how sometimes you hear, you know, in some communities, you know, crime is going down. You know, but sometimes the citizens feel like, you know, they're experiencing a lot more, you know? And I just want to make sure that our school environment similarly that, you know, we we are having the experience of. That the students feel or or the staff feels, you know, that is safer or the staff feels that, you know, there's, you know. It's a better class. I'm I'm just curious just about, you know, how to.
I think that school safety, that's who uh, uh, climate survey that I mentioned captures those issues. You know, in terms of surveying staff, very specific questions, again, it's a standardized, I I can share a sample of that with the board. Questions that are asked, uh, it may have been updated since the last time we did it.
And I had spoken with um, Superintendent Simons this week about this data and how I, what I'm really interested in isn't just these incidents, but just. How many times are teachers overhearing a student throw out a pejorative phrase, not necessarily directed at another student, but just in general. Using offensive language about groups of people because. It even if it's not directed at a certain student, a student overhears it may feel targeted. And it just creates that negative climate. And the the more negative the climate becomes. So I I I would love, I know this would be really tricky, but I'd love to find a way to track that a little bit more. Just so that we can maybe intervene before things.
The new policy requires districts to have a uh, prevention and intervention plan. And we're going to incorporate some professional development and our professional development plan to address that. And I would agree with you, Catherine, that. I think the the more we can do to be proactive about addressing those lower level incidents, I'm I'm not saying that using it a pejorative around. Students, ethnicity, races and lower level incident. When you're passing in the hallway and you throw out uh, an inappropriate word. It's not the same thing and it doesn't fall in this category, but it still has an effect on the school climate and it's directly victimizing somebody, so. The more we can address those in a proactive manner, set the tone and the culture for the school that this is, this is not acceptable behavior here. The better off everyone is in terms of the overall climate of the school. So it may not be captured here, but it is a priority.
So we had a presentation, I think, Catherine, before you were on the board. I think it was through Questar, maybe the funds came and it was peer based. So how to, how to be, you know, how to be a bystander, you know, and how to step up and use your voice and. Honestly, they they did, it was survey based and you could tell the, and we asked, I think I asked for that information to be sent around and. You know, there there are students who don't feel safe based on their, you know, sexual orientation, gender, what, you know, any, how they identify and. You know, the fact that you have, you know, three instances about on sexual orientation, you know, three on gender. You know, right? How how did those instances happen and rise to that level? You have a, you have a culture and a climate that, you know. In a way breeds that whether it's your peers or, you know, whoever is in that classroom at that time, so. I definitely agree um, wholeheartedly on that. And I think. Even so, it's it's a lot of peer based, I think, work that's needed there and, you know, how to be. How to be a bystander in those sorts of instances, how to speak up and use your voice. You know, and I think the more we connect with with the students and and peers on that, um. The more we educate folks, I think is that, that's when you'll see that that culture shift as well.
We we have committed to having more students involved. The same students that were involved last year will be re-involved this year, more students involved.
Was a really great program.
Program and more districts are signing up now. We were asked at the Bosse's retreat, district that participated, only five of us, I think, to speak positively about. Impact that that had on students and I think the districts are signing up to get their kids involved, so. I agree with you that that student empowerment is very important to address these issues as well as faculty and staff. And families, there's a lot of the things that spill over into the school. It's our responsibility when they spill over into the school to address them, but it's also responsibility of the community and the families to support appropriate behaviors among kids in the schools. And some of the things that they learn to say are learned at home.
I wanna, I wanna also say just, just on that point, cause sometimes, you know, peers are such a huge influence, you know, I just know as a parent myself. I struggle sometimes to keep my kid on track, you know, I can tell him, drill into him over and over again. This is not how we talk, this is how we think here, but they're gonna go down the street, you know, and talk to Johnny or Jimmy. You know, who might have excuse the names and I don't wanna, you know, but, but um, you know, they're gonna go down the street and they can learn something new. So I just, I just kind of wanna. Hesitate, you know, it's it's, at the end of the day, we are dealing with kids, you know, and we want to try to strengthen, you know, not just those, you know, that. That's on both sides, you know, the perspective and it's really trying to bring everyone in, you know, to create the most positive environment we can, you know, but that's just.
If you haven't had a chance to look at the data and you have any questions, further questions, please email me. I appreciate Catherine's questions today thoughts.
Moving on to the Foundation Aid Study.
Uh, yes, the board is aware that uh, the Rockefeller Institute is studying the Foundation Aid Formula and expected to give recommendations to the. Governor's office uh, by December. There had been hearings across the state. I participated in the last one, there were limited, there was limited time to. Speak, in fact, I got the gong. So I submitted a written uh, testimony. I provided the board with the uh, my testimony. Niskus uh, represented by Bob Lowery, who's a colleague and a friend of mine. And uh, Foundation Aid Hearing uh, information that was provided by NISBA. The nice thing about the forum was every single group, whether it was a small city district. Suburban district, rural district, whether it was the president of the uh, New York State United Teachers who sat in front of me. Or uh, school boards or superintendents uh, or just uh, rank and file uh. Employees of the district. They all said the same thing. The world has changed since two thousand seven and the Foundation Aid Formula was developed. Demographic factors that are utilized to determine the amount of money that school districts receive are different now than they were in two thousand seven. Some of the data is used from the two twenty, two thousand census. Which was twenty four years ago. And needs have increased. Needs for special education, needs for counselors, social workers, teachers and support staff have increased. We have more students that have challenges, whether we're a district of average wealth or high needs. And um. Some of the uh, financial data that is utilized has changed by region, so there's a, there's a regional cost index. Some regions have gotten poorer and some have gotten wealthier. And one of the big things that wasn't in place in two thousand seven, didn't come into play until I think two thousand twelve. Was the tax cap. And so within the Foundation Aid Formula, there's something called a local contribution. How much the local community taxpayers are expected to pay to provide a sound, basic education. And I believe that a sound, basic education today is different than it was in two thousand and seven. Pre-K should be part of a sound, basic education. Alternative programs should be some part of a sound, basic education. Opportunities to go to career and technical education should be part of a sound, basic education. So that number is higher now. But. The tax cap. Creates a perception that if you want to address those needs and the state isn't going to reimburse the district in the Foundation Aid Formula. To address those needs. That the the cap may be lower, the amount of money you can raise at the cap or lower than the cap may be far less than what you need. To provide that new definition of a sound, basic education, so. A lot of speakers ask for adjustments to the tax cap to be implemented at the same time you're implementing the aid formula. So that the community doesn't have the perception you're overspending when you're just trying to meet the needs of a basic sound education. Those were kind of my things, but other people said similar things. Cause you can't go out and ask the community now. To, for example, support a tax cap that goes above the cap without a perception that, you know, you've got a spending problem. As opposed to a revenue problem because the state isn't providing enough. We'll see what happens. But I I want to be part of the process and I want to represent our district in that process, so I attend the hearing and um. I'm also going to be working with Niskus and the Legislative Committee on these things. I think they hear the message and I think they're very receptive, but again, there's only so much money to go around.
I would definitely appreciate the work, Mr. Simon. Moving on to school supplies.
Yes, uh, Emily brought to my attention and I appreciated it and uh, about a week and a half to two weeks ago, maybe two weeks ago. That there were some concerns in the community regarding the cost of school supplies that were expected to be purchased by the parents. So the principals worked uh, any school to adjust the list. We pulled out of the list some of the items that we felt were more about maintenance of the classroom. Uh, or bulk items that could be purchased, so we removed as required items, tissues, Clorox, Lysol wipes. And um, baggies. There's still options if people want to donate them or contribute them to the classroom and I mentioned to the administrators today that they're gonna be. Identifying our needs and informing us as to what uh, we need to purchase. Goes along with some of the conversations you had about uh. The goals in terms of making sure we're sensitive to the needs of families. I don't see a huge increase in the budget as a result of this. I think that the supplies and materials budget can absorb some of this. And maybe tradition kind of took over and there were some things in years past where people uh. Were advised the district couldn't purchase these things, but we can.
I think that's great. I've seen um, a lot of posting on social media too about people being concerned. Either with the cost or just looking for assistance for getting supplies, um. So I know there's several organizations locally concerned too, as well as others that can help with that as well. And perhaps the PTOs, I'm not sure.
One of the things we put in the communication is that there are a lot of, a lot of organizations within the community that donate. School supplies, backpacks that are donated, full of school supplies and you have those resources available for anybody that needs them and they just contact the school.
Moving on to to reserves, I take a dismiss Mulligan.
Thank you, Mr. Temple. So um, we are in the process of uh, closing our fiscal year end. Our audit is underway. So this is preliminary information for discussion purposes, but one of the things that we evaluate on an annual basis is. What the year end results are. Um, we have under rail property tax law. A limitation of the amount of unrestricted fund balance that we're able to maintain. Um, some board members may be familiar when I did a presentation. I think it was the end of March, as part of the budget workshop, we talked about possibly exceeding four percent limitation. Um, just because of looking, projecting forward, looking at what um, potential operating deficits a district may be faced with. Um, but since then, with the foundation aid study, there has been additional information released that. Perhaps the formula would be looking at um, reserve slash unrestricted fund balance. And we wanna make sure that we're in compliance with the law, so um, so I'm recommending um, some funding of reserves. That are more operational reserves that could be appropriated, which we started as part of the twenty-four, twenty-five budget conversations. To begin um, exercising those reserves in essence, like utilizing them to help. Um, address uh, increases in certain areas or just to help spend them down or fund them in the event we have surplus. At that time, I had uh, projected our surplus for the year end was gonna be about one point four million. It's looking at like it's gonna be about two point one million. Um, I did evaluate, you know, what was the change in those projections and we um. We beat some revenue projections because of some insurance recoveries that came in, but there's also related expenditure to that. By about four hundred thousand and then also um, about four hundred thousand dollars of expenditures were less than I was projecting, so all in all. Um, it's about an eight hundred thousand dollar difference, um, which is only point seven percent of our budget, so the projections were um, pretty. Pretty good, um, so that four percent unassigned fund balance is basically four percent of. Um, the twenty-four, um, twenty-five budget, which is um, uh, four point four million dollars. Um, and our projected unrestricted fund balance, if we didn't do anything with reserves, would be uh, six point five million. So in essence, there's um, fund balance over that four percent limit of about two point one million. That number's still moving a little bit as we're closing the year end and going through the audit, so that's not a final number, that's still preliminary. Um, my recommendations are um, a little bit further down in the memorandum, so we have um, several reserves. Um, one of them is related to tax actuaries, so annually, um, by August first, anybody that, um, any. Taxpayers that are going to dispute their um, their assessment have to file that by August first, so our attorneys help evaluate the exposure on that. Um, and then we evaluate the reserve based on that exposure. So the net result of the tax actuary is a change, a reduction of about two hundred thousand dollars. And there's a chart a little bit later on, on which tax years still have open um, petition petitions and which ones um, have uh, changed. And then also, we now have the new year, um, so that's related to the tax actuaries. Um, next is our EBLR, which is our employee benefit accrued liability reserve, which basically um, is money set aside related to. Sick balances, personal balances, vacation balances, basically what is the district's liability regarding uh, that accrued time that's on our books. Um, so that particular liability, our reserve is not at the level um, of the uh, of those um. Outstanding balances and annually, we do have payments um, related to retirements for sick leave. Um, and if someone has earned vacation time on the books and they end up leaving the district, you know, there's uh, payments that are due to employees. We are able to actually in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, um, the budget includes an appropriation of that reserve. Uh, planned appropriation depending on the year end results. So I'm recommending uh, putting four hundred thousand dollars into the EBLR reserve. Um, the next reserve um, that I'm recommending is TRS, which is the teachers' retirement system. So the district has annual contributions um, uh, for the teachers' retirement system. And that contribution level for twenty-four, twenty-five is about ten point one one uh, percent of the uh. The certified staff salaries. Um, the state has particular regulations regarding uh, what that reserve level can be. It basically can't be more than ten percent and it also even prescribes further that annual contributions cannot exceed two percent. So we have a maximum cap plus an annual funding limitation. Um, so I am recommending uh, the cap is just over seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars and um, we're not near. Um, that ten percent cap yet, so we're still not there, so I was recommending that we could contribute up to that two percent limit. Um, the next reserve is um, our capital reserve for uh, twenty twenty-two, this is the reserve that was approved by the voters. Um, this is the reserve that was appropriate as part of the district vote um, for our upcoming capital project. So the funding of this would re- reserve would be for future capital projects, it would not be able to fund. Um, the current capital project, so be looking at funding future needs, um, you know, the district does have, you know, seven buildings. Um, and other facilities and you know, the estimates would turn our construction were over two hundred million and our capital project is a hundred and sixteen million. So just looking at it prudently that there are gonna be additional facility needs as we go along. There's also the electric bus mandate and perhaps the transportation facilities may need some upgrades down the road. Uh, still a lot to to learn on uh, the direction of that. Um, so I am recommending doing some additional funding to that capital reserve. The next um, capital reserve is a specific reserve for bus purchases, we have a fleet of a hundred and two buses. Um, and based on their useful life, we're basically replacing about eight a year. Um, so that uh, would allow us to continue with that reserve, the district currently does not provide. Within its annual budget and process of funding of the bus reserve, but we do have certainty of annual bus expenditures. So um, looking at, you know, our, our fiscal status in the future years, are we gonna be able to continue to fund that? Annual need of bus purchases, so I wanted to look at, you know, funding. We're, we're using approximately half a million dollars a year out of that bus reserve because that bus reserve. Is funded through state aid on prior bus purchases, um, so there are some revenues that come in to the reserve fund. And then um, we also have the actual spending of that reserve, so the net reduction on an annual basis without any funding. Is about a half a million dollars, so looking at the size of the bus reserve, it could provide perhaps three to four years of bus purchases. With uncertainty as to whether or not we'll be able to continue to fund the bus reserve unless we make certain provisions in in the budget process.
Can I ask you a question, Jennifer, to highlight something that we've already discussed? The the approach that Jennifer is recommending goes along with some of the conversations that we had last year. Within the budget process about reserves. Um, historically, the district has uh, uh, proposed a budget. And uh, appropriated fund balance. And uh, planned in such a way that at the end of the year, if there was mu- if there was money left over, unspent budget, we would figure out. Uh, what to do with it in terms of reserves, what Jennifer is talking about is a shift in planning ahead and saying, we know that we're gonna have expenses in certain areas. Therefore, let's budget to appropriate those monies into the reserve for a specific purpose and I, you could just elaborate on that a little bit. Why, why, I mean, mentioning this with in terms of the uh, capital project, capital reserve, you mentioned this in terms of the transportation reserve. Planned replenishment of those reserves tied to forecasting increased expenses that we're gonna need to pay out of the reserve. Because the general operating budget is going to be very tight.
Yeah, so um, if if we're, let, you know, when during March, when we were looking at projecting. You know, our part of our budget has um, fund balance, appropriated fund balance on an annual basis. And the the district hasn't actually appropriated that fund balance, in other words, that actually hasn't spent that down. But because revenues, whether from state aid or tax levy, um, actually state, we had some increases, but. Um, with the tax levy, our revenues haven't, has not kept pace, you know, with the expenditures. So over time, you know, we're going to have to start utilizing that appropriated fund balance in order to balance the budget. Um, so if we're looking at um, twenty-four, twenty-five, I think at the time and it's too early in the year, we're closing out. The prior fiscal year, but we were projecting that there could be a decent operating deficit, which means we'd be spending some of that um, fund balance. And then would that be available in future years? So if perhaps there could end up being a year end result that there's an operating deficit in twenty-four, twenty-five, there are no funds to. But this time next year, there wouldn't be any money to put into a reserve, so one of the things um, you know, that. I wanna start looking at and part of the long range planning process is to, okay, perhaps the funding of the bus reserve. Because if we know we're not gonna be able to do it with excess funds perhaps, then maybe we should have a line item in the budget. That says we're going to annually fund the bus reserve, um, if that's the the direction, depending on. Um, how the budget is formulated down the road.
Questions, comments?
Can I um, take us back to the EBLR, is that your acronym for it? I I think I saw in there, and I don't know if you, you said this, but is this the first time we're dipping into that reserve?
Yes, so basically um, as part of the budget, so we have our expenditures, there's a line item. Which approximates it, you know, it varies depending on the number of um, retirements we have, but it's about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So when we look at all of the um, expenditures in the budget, we have to identify revenue sources to fund that. So we are, we made a decision to include in the budget to appropriate that EBLR reserve. To fu- to fund that expenditure. Now, if the world changes, the tides change and our operating results are much different than what I was looking at. You know, and there was money, we don't necess- that doesn't mean we're actually appropriating it. So there would have to be a decision by the board to authorize the actual appropriation of the fund if we need it. You know, at the end of next fiscal year, we'd be looking at that, so depending on the year end results, is it a guarantee that we're going to use that? You know, um, that that is to be seen, but based on our projections, I'm projecting that we're going to start using that.
Okay, that's helpful, so we're putting in, I guess we're putting in four hundred, but really potentially taking out two eighty, so then.
Over, over the um, yes, so over time, um, the reserves have grown.
Grown substantially.
Substantially, yeah.
And this is gonna be my point.
Yep.
We keep funding these reserves, I've said this before, and we never use them. And they just grow, we suck money away, and the taxpayer takes the hit with the tax levy in future years, we're not appropriating reserves. So, you know, I I talked about this last year, it's gonna come a point where you're gonna have to use these appropriately. And again, having a tool over two million dollars in the year and we're putting into reserves again, so.
But with a plan to spend it, like, that's the difference.
Yes, and that's the commitment that we got.
Right.
This past year.
Right.
So.
This is in line with that, this is in line with that.
It has to be.
Yeah.
That was the commitment.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, so basically, you know, part of, you know, that fund balance analysis, I think it was even at a subsequent meeting. We looked at how those reserves would be spent and what those balances would be over time. Because looking at reducing our reliance on um, appropriating unrestricted, you know, fund balance. Um, so that's the shift is, you know, the, the, the unrestricted fund balance. That's part of what's balancing the budget is anticipated to be spent down over the next few years. So that won't be available, so we're gonna have to shift to appropriating reserves. Yeah, I I think based on, yeah, based on the analysis that was done, you know, we're gonna be going through that process again this fall. To relook at that, you know, there are a lot of things that change with those projections, I I know we have some vacancies, you know, vacancies produce. You know. Yeah, so there's, there's a variety of things that could change what that outlook is depending on how, you know, the district behaves with the spending. And um, how, you know, conservative we are with um, the revenue budget, you know, so. You know, we didn't budget a hundred percent of the anticipated investment earnings because the economy is volatile. But we do know that there'll be some additional revenues that come in for that, um, you know, at this point in time, so. There's a lot of things that can change, which can change those um, year end results, we're only um, two months into the fiscal year. Um, so, so that that will be the constant monitoring and evaluation and providing updates to the board as we go along.
In line with uh, monitoring the spending, uh, in September, the board will be receiving the appropriation status reports. And we'll be having more discussions, there'll be a lot of discussion of finances here because of the situation with uh, our budget and also the. The potential for renewed aid, so we're, you're gonna be seeing some different reporting and we're probably gonna have more discussions. Earlier than we've had in the past, so that you're aware of the trends in expenditures and some of the things that we're doing to adjust in those areas.
Thank you, Mr. Simon, I I I agree a hundred percent with Mr. Buno on on um, you know, cost control. Um, I do appreciate the the job Ms. Mulligan is doing on on calculating the numbers and considering, you know, um, you know. How we can have flexibility with funds as we approach a budget crunch and um, and and allocate and also anticipate the 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 spend. And then keeping our reserves at the, at the cap, um, I just wanna say additionally that, um, you know, I I think it's important as we approach. The po- potential of a operating deficit that we consider um, um, thinking about like actual programs and the direction of cost savings. You know, like like, you know, what can we do to say if we reach an operating deficit? You know, that that we're, we have a sharp eye on it, we're doing everything we can to avoid raising taxes, but we have to. We have to um, you know, maintain the quality of our education program, so I I think just anything that we can do to just show positive steps. Um, in that direction, I think would would be excellent, and I know there's a lot of work going on and it's it's a work in progress, but just to have that in mind.
Thank you for the discussion.
Uh, one more comment, I don't agree with the capital reserve, it's too far out.
Yeah, uh, this is a discussion, so this is just um, thought, so I mean, it can move in terms of where. The, but this is just a proposal and thoughts and consideration of, um, you know, the thought process that I took, obviously.
It's a matter of, that piece of it, I think you need to look at, I don't think we should be funding a capital reserve at this point.
So like, what's the other options?
I think it's further out someplace else.
Can we, can we have a discussion about what some, someplace else is?
Um, the other options would be, so that I didn't make a, so the other reserves that we have that I um, have not. Um, touched is like the ERS reserve, because I think that is pretty healthy. Um, in relation to the balance and what our annual expenses are.
The ERS piece you said wasn't fully funded yet, right?
It's not, but we're at the limit, so the limit is uh, two percent annually, which was like seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, so I was using round numbers.
Chen, Chen, could you also share like, is the capital reserve like a restricted versus unrestricted fund and how?
Yes, that is restricted, yeah, so that's specifically, and that would be longer term, you know.
The money's there.
Yes, right, yeah, so like the capital reserve, that's meant for just general capital needs. That would need voter approval to spend.
Okay.
Um, the same as the bus reserve too.
I mean, the ERS you can look at, cuz we can, we've done that before, we pull money out of the ERS.
Yes. So ERS and EBLR would be my recommendations, as if we were going to shift. Um, because EBLR, our liability is in excess, so. Um, there was a report by the state comptroller of districts that had exceeded their EBLR reserves in relation to our liability and we were not on that report. Um, because we haven't reached that level, so that would be an option.
I can support that.
Okay.
So moving the money to EBLR and then, and taking the, the appropriation out of the operating and moving it to that fund? Taking it out of the fund every year?
Not the capital reserve, do it to the, to the other one.
So it would be.
To be determined.
Yeah, reasonable amount.
What do you need a decision by?
So um, the next step is, um, based on this discussion, we were going to provide perhaps what the recommendations are, which could change. Um, the auditors are gonna be finalizing things, but obviously something could change, so we'd be looking for board approval at the next meeting, first meeting in September.
Could you also at the next meeting, if we're gonna go into the EBLR, could we have like a better idea of what we take out more, like a historical context of? I know you said two eighty.
Oh, what the actual spending. Oh, what the actual spending has been.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So we can get an idea of what.
Yeah, I can provide that. You should better look at that of that fund.
Put it on as a discussion item because we wanted the input. I appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Is there any questions or comments? Motion to approve. Ms. O'Brien, a second. Ms. Van Orton, all in favor? All right, all in favor, motion passes. Moving on to the East Green Bush Central School District, District-wide Safety Plan with the town of East Green Bush, SRO agreement and Rensselaer County Sheriff's Office SRO. I didn't have to read it all. But any questions or comments? A motion to approve, Mr. Mann, and a second, Ms. Turner, all in favor? All, all in favor, motion passes. Moving on to adoption of the dual tax rate system for twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Is there any questions or comments on this? Do is there a motion to approve? Ms. O'Brien, is there a second? Mr. Buno, all in favor? All right, all are in favor, motion passes. Moving on to the twenty-four, twenty-five AS seven contract for both these services. Is there a question or comment on this contract? Is there a motion to approve? Ms. Turner, is there a second? Ms. O'Brien, all in favor? All in favor, motion passes. Okay, and moving on to the Columbia High School Driver Education Proposal. Is there a question or comment?
It's common. I want to appreciate going forward with it. Can't press anything, so.
Yeah, I have a quick question, too, because I have a child that I'm going to be in it. Is the registration in person? I know. I saw that, but do you have to physically go or you can do it online? You bring it into the main office at the high school? Okay, all right, thank you.
So you, I'm sorry, can we, can we just clarify? You have to fill out the form and physically drop it at the school?
Or your student.
Is it, is it a lottery? I'm assuming you're saying that a lot of people want in. It's first come, first served. I think that these kinds of practices are the ones that we should evaluate, you know, about the ability to drive to the, you know, high school to be able to get your kid into it. There's some like, you know, affordabilities there that might not be available to everyone. Access to car, time away from work, non-traditional work hours, et cetera. If these things can be done online and submitted in a certain window, I think that those would be more successful. You know, and thinking about inclusion and access to all.
Does the parent have to bring it in or can the student bring it in? They come in on a boss.
Having some situations, past spring, I took the parent's name and put them right in the the order. And that one parent reached out, said they couldn't get that. I said, cool, I'll put you in now and I'll print a worksheet of papers, pick you into like fifteen in line and get it to me when you can the next day.
So everybody who wants to do driver's ed gets into driver's ed?
We've had a waiting list in the summer with five, five kids. I got thirty-two, thirty-two. Probably going to go up to thirty-six spots, which is the state maximum.
So you said that the registration opens on Friday? So I guess my concern with the bus is they aren't at school. So they aren't coming to the building anyways. Is there, if we need a physical form, is there any reason we cannot wait until the first day of school to collect the registration?
Start the program on Monday, September ninth, in order to get sixteen weeks of instruction because of our calendar where we are and where Regent's Week is in January to start this spring.
We can look at this for the spring semester and see if there are procedural changes we can make for now with the fall. You know, the the need to get the students registered. We can look at a change in procedure perhaps to consider a process that we can register online. Mr. Tucker and I will work on that.
All right, is there, is there a motion to pass? Mr. Mann, is there a second? Ms. Turner, all in favor? All right, all are in favor, motion passes. Moving on to physician services, driver physicals. Is there any questions or comments? A motion to to approve. Mr. Buno's second. Ms. Turner, all in favor? All are in favor, motion passes. And moving on to committee reports, Ms. Cannon.
Thank you, Mr. Temple. I provided a memo with a staffing update. There has been some movement. We actually have some of these vacancies that are on this memo. We've recommended candidates for approval of appointment tonight on tonight's consent agenda. So in terms of instructional vacancies, as of now, we are going to be conducting final interviews for our music teacher position, physical therapist position, and then special education position at Golf Middle School. All of those final interviews will be conducted next week, and we are hopeful we'll have recommendations for hire on the first September agenda. We have a couple of teaching assistant vacancies right now. And then in terms of our non-instructional needs, we have been holding continuous recruitment interviews for our transportation department, which has been very successful this year. So we are going to be recommending four new bus drivers at the first September agenda. And I just wanted to say thank you to everyone in the transportation department that has helped us get there. We have identified folks that have actually been helping our driver candidates study for the permit test. So they've really gone the extra mile. And so when we're having our interviews, we have a helpful flyer and we've even identified the sections on where they need to study for that CNS endorsement. And then a big thank you to our folks that have been training our candidates in the driver training program. I know they've taken a lot of time on that this summer. We have a couple custodial worker positions that we're working on filling. A vacant food service helper position at Golf. We have a head, two head custodian vacancies and we have monitor position at DPS and then several type of positions that we're looking to fill. Anyone have any questions on that? I also just want to highlight, we did have a new staff orientation for two full days. It was Monday, August nineteenth. And Tuesday, August twentieth, we welcomed twenty new staff members into our East Green Bush family. It was a packed two days with a lot of information, but I'm confident that our new hires feel very equipped coming out of that to start the school year on September third. We had our total administrative team come in and help welcome everyone into the district. We had our district safety training that day, a very informative presentation regarding payroll and benefits. And then from there, we made appointments for every new hire so that they could have a one-on-one and have an explanation of the benefit plans that would be available to them. We really talked about some of the, you know, extra items such as four oh three B and deferred compensation. We had our employee assistance program present, just on the importance of checking in on your mental health and on your family's mental health. Our EAP program is available for free to all of our district staff and also to their families. So partners, spouses, children, that is all available for free. So just making sure we're equipping our new staff with the knowledge that those programs are available to them. We did a presentation through Mr. Goodwin's office on district network training. We provided all of our new staff with email accounts, made sure that they were able to log in. And then we had several other presentations in terms of just overviews of our special education programs. We had breakout sessions for our teaching assistants so that they had a very good understanding of the students that they would be supporting in this school year, and then also an overview of MTSS. And we had our mentor coordinator, Melissa Gilligan, come in and just share about our mentoring program and the benefits that come from that. So and then, you know, lastly, I just want to big thank you to our collective bargaining units. They also made themselves available for new staff orientation. And all of our new staff members were able to meet with their prospective union leadership. So it was overall nice two days.
Can I ask a question on this? Can we go back to the head custodian for Green Meadow? I know you said we're awaiting the list from civil service. Do you have any idea of the timeframe on that? Is that, was that like an exam list or?
Yes, so it's a great question. The the test was administered at the end of March. But there was a medical situation. There was an individual that was actually hospitalized that had to sit for that test. So it just delayed it a little bit. The state, though, is working on grading that exam. They have caught up through. They've informed me the middle of March of twenty twenty-four. So Rensselaer County Civil Service said that we should have the list. They were hopeful that it would be the beginning of September.
Okay, so what are we, what do we do in the meantime for the head custodian there?
Yeah, so our director of facilities has identified individuals within the operations and maintenance department that are covering those positions and they're being paid a differential. And then we have substitutes that are backfilling their positions in the district.
Thank you.
There are no table motions. Is there any old business that the board want to discuss? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Is everybody okay with the consent agenda or want to discuss anything in it? All right, is there a motion to approve the the consent agenda? Mr. Mann, a second. Ms. Turner, and all in favor? Motion passes.
I want to just recognize Nicole Mahoney is our new assistant principal at Golf Middle School. Nicole is coming to us from Husick Falls. She is a five through twelve assistant principal at Husick Falls. She's an eleven or twelve-year-old, twelve-year background as a counselor and has done a lot of work in Husick Falls on restorative practices and connecting with families. So very familiar with the services here in Rensselaer County, and we're very pleased to have her and welcome her aboard.
All right, moving on to the addendum to instructional support personnel memo. Are there any questions or comments on on this approval? All right, is there a motion to pass? Mr. Mann, is there a second? Ms. Van Orton, all in favor? All in favor, motion passes. And moving on to the addendum to non-instructional support personnel memo, are any questions or comments? Is there a motion to pass? Mr. Buno, is there a second? Ms. O'Brien, all in favor? What's in favor, motion passes?
Congratulations, Tom.
Board member coming back into the district.
Is there any new business you want to discuss? And all right, a public forum. Any comments, questions? Nothing? Board forum, I'm going to start on my right. Ms. Steinbeck?
No, I'm good, thank you.
I just want to welcome all our new staff, Ms. Mahoney and all the teachers. I just hope that the school year starts off great for everyone and with a focus on the kids in our district. And I just hope that we all create the environment we're looking for. Mr. Mann?
All said, thank you.
Yeah, just echo Jesse all the best for our school opening. First day of school, making a big impression. Good to see you guys here today, you know. I'm sure we'll hear from you in the future. Who's in charge here? Who's in the present? Allison's still present. But good to see everyone aboard. Yeah, looking forward to a great school year once again.
All right, so moving on, there is going to be a need for for executive session today as a personnel matters.
I don't, I don't have any.
Nothing, nothing to say? All right. So I'm going to need a motion to adjourn. Is there, Mr. Mann, a second? Ms. O'Brien, and all in favor? All right, motion passes, motion adjourned.